Oh.
Six thirty P M. So we'll call meeting eighteen fourteen to order. For the Planning and zoning Commission on Tuesday, November ninth. It's a hybrid meeting with the Commission all present. And Ruth Fan is joined by Zoom. We have a forum with all of our regular members present. Do we have any added agenda items?
Just the one item there, eighteen Craftsman Road.
That we'll put under receipt of applications. No legal notices? Anybody for public participation? And seeing nobody. How about we move to approval of minutes from our last meeting, October twenty six, twenty twenty one? Did anybody want any edits? Set of minutes that they prepared for us.
I did not.
Anybody have anything? No? Well, if we have no edits, then a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of meeting eighteen thirteen of October twenty six, twenty twenty one, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye. I'm staying.
So the four of us that were present are in favor. Friends abstained. Under receipt of applications, an application came in today for eighteen Craftsman Road. It's a site plan modification, so that will appear against at our next regular meeting.
Uh, yeah, Ruth, is that coming up for the next meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay, anything under performance bonds, actions, permit acceptance, or road acceptance?
Nothing.
Okay, no continued public hearings and no new public hearings? How about old business or new business?
Yep.
Okay, under other business, I just want you to know that our next meeting, I will be able to join by Zoom, but I will be at my daughter's house, so I won't be present. So I don't know if that works to chair it from Zoom.
Sure.
Okay. I'll have my package that I picked up before you. As far as correspondence? Nothing?
Nothing, no.
Okay. That takes us to business meeting. And we have a draft of planned commercial development district regulations. From Mike, do you want to walk us through?
Yes, so this is the first pass, you know, somewhat of a substantial application or reg. But based on the previous discussions that we've had about certain target sites and trying to increase their development potential in both encouraging uses that makes sense for the site, but that makes sense for the market, having the flexibility in the site design, and also coming up with a process which is incremental in the approach in that the first step involves a concept plan, which allows the commission to see the general layout of the site and uses, but doesn't get into a hundred percent engineering design, so that significantly reduce the costs of the developer in the beginning. And then as you move from concept plan to site design, that's when we get into the full-blown site plans like we see. So this, the, the, this is a reg that again, it's got a lot of, a lot of pieces to it, but if you go to the last page, you'll see a process overview, which I sort of tried to simplify the general process and show you that it starts with a pre-application conference with staff, the submission of a special permit and zone change application, public hearings, review of master plan, which is what this, which is what it's called, decision by P Z C, and then final site plan. So it's a two-tiered application which comes in. The first is the, is what lands the special development district, because this will essentially be a floating zone. It will be a zone that has the parameters established on paper, but the, but the actual locations of it don't exist anywhere on the map as of yet. So they'll submit a zone change application to land the zone on the property, and then they'll submit a conceptual plan to show where the buildings will be, how many there will be, how big they'll be, what the potential uses are. And that's a two-part application, so special permit zone change. And then, once that's approved, in theory, they can go do their design, or they can go and look for their tenants, or negotiate with this or that. And then they come back with a full-blown developed site plan to show you everything at a hundred percent engineering. But the idea is that the zone has been landed, the public hearing, the uses have already been litigated, and they have that incremental buy-in from the commission to then go to tenants, and the benefit to this is speed to market. Because they can go to a tenant and say, I have a pad site that's good for five hundred thousand square feet approved for a certain use. And so it cuts down the amount of time necessary for them through engineering and planning and zoning reviews significantly. Which is sort of the approach that we talked about previously.
Let's see, it's only can be applied to Route five corridor, industrial core.
So, yeah, the functional components of this, as far as what we allow and don't allow, how, what zones we apply to, if, you know, do we want to have eligibility as far as acres of sites in excess of a certain acreage? There are some towns that say that they'll only issue a maximum of a certain number. So this special development district, the, the, the zone change application and the special permit, that actual concept plan, that will show how far the building will be, how big it'll be covered. We've included the maximums, we've, we've written what the ceiling will be, but every time you approve this, it'll basically be like a one-off zone. So every time you approve a different one, if you have three sites, they're not going to be three sites which are part of the same special development district. They're going to be three sites which are within a special development district, but the development criteria will be specific to that site. So some towns say, we're only going to issue a maximum of five or ten. So we can dial in or, or, or relax these based on your comfort level. I've sort of taken a middle-of-the-road approach, I think.
Why would we feel the need to limit that number?
The town that I know of that does this has a, has three or four different types of development districts, and so they've targeted each one for very specific nodes. And so they know that the highway interchange special development district is only really going to apply to a certain number of, number of parcels based on development. So they, they've capped the numbers. We don't have that here. They're much more, they're a shoreline town, they've got a lot more in the way tourist, tourist destinations and a couple of highway exits and other things. So they have really focused areas where they have the pressure and then it stops.
I just think of, when I think of the Route five corridor, if somebody wanted to do something good and redevelop a bunch of car lots into something a higher and better use, that, that could be a good thing. And when I think of the northern business border, I assume that means Route one forty?
Yep, the B three.
So you have all the way from Warehouse Point to Ellington, basically.
The B three stops at, what is it, Christie's, Casey's?
Oh, at Baskfield Plaza.
Oh, that, that automotive use right on the corner.
Auto, is that what it is?
Yeah, so it stops there.
But you have a lot of vacant land.
Right.
It goes to Town and Country.
Walls Road.
Does it go to Wells? So it's, well, it doesn't, yeah, so it doesn't continue that far, but, but the idea is.
There's a lot of empty land.
Right, and, and the, the, other than the process, the other piece that's different to this is that the traditional bulk standards, you have a front ear traffic of fifty feet, you have a side ear traffic of twenty-five feet, you have a this and those. You know, again, we set the caps, but it's flexible. And the idea is, we're going to allow the flexibility because you're going to give us a, a far more refined design, both in the style of building, but pedestrian uses and connections to this and that, and flexibility. So there's a bit of a trade-off for the way we look at it.
Well, I see the pedestrian benefit in Warehouse Point.
Excuse me, I read it quickly. So the minimum of four acres?
That's the way it's, that's the way it's written now. You guys can move it up or down. I, I just.
And two buildings.
Two buildings? It doesn't, it could be one building.
I think, wow.
Yeah.
For, it's hard for a small guy to put a business in there.
Right. Do we have, do we have these little plots of four acres in the community?
I think, so looking at.
Four acres is quite a hook of land.
In talking at the previous meeting, I think we do have a fair number of parcels which are in excess of ten acres.
Oh, we do.
So I think, and again, we're asking for a very high-level site and building design, and we're giving them the flexibility as the trade-off. We don't want everybody to come in under special development district. We want very specific targeted parcels that are going to contribute to where we're trying to move. Right, so we give them a benefit for lead if they do that. So we don't want everybody to come in on this. It's got to be very specific parcels that are going to really change the trajectory. For example, if we got a really nice mixed-use building out on one forty there that had residential and, and, and commercial, and was designed really, really nicely, and had pedestrian amenities, that could totally change the trajectory of that area. So we want to create the flexibility, so that if the market will allow for that, they can come in and do that. But we don't want everybody to do it.
So the first thing that would happen is the public hearing, they're safer spot zoning.
There is case law which says that special development districts are allowed, so we can.
That's the first thing the public's going to say.
Yeah, and the whole key to spot zoning is that it has to be out of character with the P O C D and zoning laws. So as long as we can show that it's not, which you're going to approve it, so you find that.
That one forty quarter, so we bring down water and gas, whatever, they were all.
Yeah.
So you mean, right, and to get, and so increasing density and increasing the viability of customers will help with some of that demand.
We had it once before you were here, but they turned it down. Commit, water, gas, right down.
And it was paid for, but.
Paid for, and it's out, shut it down. The old commission before us, you.
I was here, and I never forget, because I asked, I forgot his name already. I asked if you have planned these, and of course I, I'll go the other way.
And they killed Walls, and they killed Walls Road, my whole room. Well, not my whole room, but.
Are, are all of these parameters amendable then, as far as like by the applicants? Because, you know, some of the restrictions, you know, forty-eight feet higher, okay? So somebody comes in and says, my design, I need, I need fifty-five, or something. Are these, are these amendable, or these max numbers?
Especially if it's permitted, so.
No, so, so if we're setting the maximum requirements at, right now, it's set at forty-eight feet. So if they wanted to exceed that, it would, they, right, they would need, because, again, we don't want to, we don't want to have, we want to have some foundation, some boundary. So using forty-eight feet is perhaps not high enough that we go up. We can, max height would be sixty, or, or whatever. So it's really up to your comfort level in looking at the uses that are allowed, or use, looking at the area that this is going to be allowed for stories. You know, it's.
Coming back.
It could be.
I mean, like you say, a lot of these things are open to whatever you come before us, you know? There's a, if there's a specific reason or need or why they need to go more, or less. Or, well, it's just max, you know, so that's her, at least be worth to be able to let them, you know, speak their cases for why they needed.
Right.
Then same thing with, you know, the, no retail over thirty thousand square feet. What makes you go?
Is that like Walmart's?
No, Walmart's.
Walmart's. Two hundred.
Ow. The thirty thousand square foot threshold is existing in our regs already, so I just pulled that use from there. Because again, we're.
So we have like a Bass Food Shop wanting to come in and do it.
No, they would come in under the underlying reg. They would, nothing changes on that side. They would have to go to a place that allows retail, that could support a site and do all of that. The idea is, in, in certain circumstances, this development district for very specific uses provides flexibility. It's not just making development easier across the board.
You have under modifications, right, where it's one, you can increase the building size, height, et cetera, by five percent or more.
That's once it's approved. So they could come in and say, oh, our tenant decided he needs an extra garage bay. And so we could say, okay, that's a, that's a, you know, small increase. You don't need to go back through the whole process.
I mean, for height, you know, that's obviously a purview's coverage.
Yeah.
Size, height of the building, or a purview's coverage.
So, right, so they could do an increase in height by five percent. And, you know, that could be if they need to change a roof line, or I, I don't know, I mean, it would probably be adding a story if they're going to. It's going to decide.
You have to maintain the existing topography and vegetation. There's a lot of the vegetation there is basic.
Gee. Eight ones, it's on B five last.
I just look at, like, I think of that low site that's on that hill in there.
Well, well, I think it's, again, it's, it's looking at to the maximum extent practicable. So the idea is, if we have existing and mature trees or, or buffering that's there, we don't want you to just come in and scrape the site clean. So practicable, in my mind, means they make a case. If they say they can't keep it, the commission can decide.
Okay, there's a lot of vacant land that's scrubbing junk growing out of it.
Yeah, yeah, and I wouldn't want that, but if there's, you know, some really nice mature trees.
Yep.
I don't know, I'm always, I'm always in favor of keeping some of that if you can. But a practicable means there's some flexibility.
Okay.
But I can, you know, so I can adjust that so that maybe we put a note in there, not to call it high value, but. So that if there's stuff like that, I can clarify that.
Isn't five, isn't five percent of three stories another story? Stories considered tall feet?
I think, well, it would probably be based on heights. If you have a hundred-foot tall building, you could go up another five feet. I wouldn't do it by story, I would do it by height, by in feet.
So at a max of forty-eight.
Right, yeah.
If someone came in for a modification and they were going to go over that max height, would we be able to grant that?
So the way that the reg is structured is that we're setting the caps through this design consideration. So if you want to, if you want to set the ceiling higher and just feel comfortable that if someone comes in and says, I want a sixty-foot building, they could state their case to you, then we can just adjust that. That's, you know, that's not a big deal. I think Silverman is fifty.
Yeah, right.
If I remember correctly.
But here you want to be able to have the height and then.
Especially if we're talking mixed use, then we may want some additional height there.
And the green building, you may want solar on it.
And some shielding, maybe some screening, or something like that, so.
Okay.
So you'll build a pair, a pair of that wall, yeah, that will change next time. I mean, it used to always be kind of dependent on what was the highest piece of equipment required of our. That's what they used to set it at.
By the way, I, like, Little Road, we did the best thing of little building or, or stories. That's where that comes from, I think. More growth stuff, did that, the old back.
And the green building standards would require if it's residential, you'd be charging.
I do not know, I'm not being certified, but I certainly can find out what the requirements would be. So I can make some of those tweaks, we can keep this sort of just hanging maybe one more meeting, and then we can decide at the next meeting what we want to refer to Crog. Yeah.
Use thirty thousand square foot for retail.
I would say.
Seems a little long for a, for a max number.
So do we just want to include, take it out and put, just leave it as retail establishments, not cap it?
Yeah.
We got that. Bass Food Shop.
What do you think, Ruth? Should we leave it open?
You know, the plans are going to come in to be reviewed. Right?
Really just.
If it's not, if it's not suitable, then.
Probably going to be capped by the, the purview's coverage, and also just depending on the site size. I mean, if they, if they find a fifty, sixty-acre site, then.
Or a hundred, I mean, really, a, a hundred and sixty, right? That's the, that's the high end of developable parcels that we know of. So I'm writing this with an understanding that you have that cap.
But an outlet moment.
I think they're not.
So, you know, you have a hundred and sixty acres, and you have something else, eight hundred thousand square feet. You know, that's much larger. So thinking of the top end more than the low one, but we can, we can tweak that. So I'll remove the cap, we'll increase the height, clarify some of the vegetation. Anything else that?
If there's, if there's going to be residential and the redevelopment, green building doesn't get EV charging wiring, I would want them to, in their theme green, at least have the wiring in place.
So the one thing about this that's different than what you'll see in most special development districts is they have, they typically require the public hearing at the end. So you come in with your zone change application, the text change application, which is hearings and the whole nine yards. A lot of towns will make you take this reg for your development, you have to name it, special development district Warehouse Point. And then they amend their regs and they put it in here. So there's two public hearings, two text amendments, two referrals. And then you get your concept plan, and then you come back for a public hearing for a special permit. So it's a very, it's long, there's a lot of hearings, so this process is different in that this public hearing will be at the concept level phase. So people will be able to speak as to the general and overall development and the general overall use of the property or uses. But the actual final plan that you look at for number of parking spaces and how many are revories, that is just cycling. That's the way this is structured.
Yeah, I like, I saw it.
So it's neat, but I think it makes more sense, because once you've already endorsed the concept plan, you shouldn't need to have a hearing. They've already litigated the proposed use. So I'm trying to make it, I think, a little bit more functional.
And by the time you get to the end, that it's, you know, like, what are you guys doing behind closed doors? That's the only thing we're doing, so.
Right. So, okay, so I will tweak some of this stuff and come up with a revised version for the next meeting.
Good start.
Yeah. Well, we're in, good job.
It, uh. We could be having.
Doing anything with the acreage?
So then it's going to be a minimum of four acres.
What do you, what do you think? Well, I mean, below four acres, you're not talking that big of a project, so you could probably just go under the underlying zoning, but that's it.
So you think four acres is too small or too big?
No.
Four acres is what you got for you.
Because, and Ruth, we were talking about with the cannabis regs, that's where the ten-acre thing came into play. We were looking at the number of uses in the, in the same commercial areas that are in excess of ten, and we figured out there's actually a little bit more than you'd think. So if we.
Four acres is going to be a lot of spots. And there's nothing to prevent combinations of properties, though.
Right. So someone could, could go through this process, they could rezone five individual properties that total eight acres. And then have that approval and file it and get it all ready to go, and then spend three years aggregating properties. If any of you know Bloomfield, there's a heirloom flats which was developed right behind the town hall. And he assembled that property slowly and just over time. And that's a special development district, it's the same idea, and he has a phase two. So he expanded the extent of the development district to include an additional area of land on the other side of the road. But, but once he had the conceptual approval, he knew he had the town behind him, so he was able to make those representations and acquiring properties versus sort of a hail mary. Yeah. That's what that project was, it's, it's a beautiful project.
Mike, do you know anything about Rocky Hill and Down by the River? Is that the same kind of approach? That they're hoping to do down there, down by Ferry Park?
I don't know that one. I could, we could find out, though.
Yeah, I'll look into it, too. I, um, it just has, as, the more we dig into this, it makes me think, maybe they have something there we should be looking at.
Yeah. We, I, I worked with East Hartford and myself and my partner, we rewrote the special development district regs for the Silverland, so that whole area along eighty-four, which is, which was the showcase, and they are using a special development district for that. And so this is a much more dialed-back version of that, because they're dealing with a lot of huge development. But it's, and it's a simplified approach, but this is, we've got some of this, a little bit of Essex, a little bit of Stonington. It's a melting pot of zoning regulations.
Yeah.
The way to do it.
Take the best, leave the worst, and.
Take what works, cut it.
So next you have on here, review of planning priorities.
Did that, that carryover? Maybe a better carryover. I don't have it, we talked about this the last meeting, Brett.
Yeah. Maybe there's something new that wants.
So the things we have going, we have the cannabis regs, which I probably should tell folks that the public hearing is going to be our December fourteenth meeting. To open that, we notified Crog with the regulations, the draft regs that we presented at the last meeting.
Did you see Enfield put her hat back in the ring?
No, I hadn't seen that.
It was in the paper.
They had changing of the guard there, and now they want to reverse their moratorium.
Did they do a moratorium or a ban?
A ban.
A ban, yeah.
Through ordinance?
Yeah. Was that the town that had, the town council voted, and then there was a big petition from the?
No, where was that? Hearing about that, someone submitted a petition, and said it was wrong, they threw it out.
Right here, you told.
No, another, another down that ban? Well, they just, they just voted the council on?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, one of the other things on that priority list were the definitions. And I think for me personally, if, if we could look at that B three zone to make that a little easier for folks. People are discouraged that want to open up business over in that area with the special use permit requirement. It does turn people away.
So you have there a table, which I started, we talked about this a number of times, yeah, of the working sort of definitions. We have a bunch of, a bunch of definitions in the zoning regs, or a bunch of terms in the zoning regs, like fifty or sixty, and only about ten or eleven are actually defined. And it hasn't come up as much as I would have expected it to, but generally speaking, the problem comes into play with either staff or the commission, is we have a term, but we don't actually say what we mean by it. And so the, the idea is just to create that clarity and, and actually establish regulations. For example, one of the ones that comes up often, what's the difference between light and heavy manufacturing? And and actually establish regulations. For example, one of the ones that comes up often, what's the difference between lighting and having manufacturing? And and you know, if someone has an existing manufacturing building and they're allowed to have lighting manufacturing, they want to commit to something. They come into staff. We don't know what it is. It's hard for us to say, yeah, you can just go in and turn the lights on or no, you need to go for a special permit. So um. We want to have um. Some clarity, I think there.
What do you? Or if you're casting, you know, things. Yeah, buying wrong stock and just reconfiguring it, you know, wood or metal or whatever.
Um, something else that, you know, we have, but you know, adult oriented establishment, right? Not having a definition of that, and so a store that sells retail items, you know, it can be very different for what people. Think, um, so. This is just, again, making it very clear in the regs, when we say in the table, we allow a contractor storage art. Here's the definition so that you know what the use actually is. Um, so the the proposed definitions, which I started up. APA, American Planning Association, has a dictionary, so they have definitions that are suggested, but also. What they consider to be good examples from cities and towns across the country, so that's where a lot of this is coming from.
So the ones that are blank, there is no?
No, I just, I'm just still working through them. Um, but I wanted to sort of start the conversations, we talked about plot priorities plus meeting. And you had a light agenda. So um, we'll keep working at that. What was the other thing? Oh, if somebody was selling tires. Is that an automotive related use or retail? State of Connecticut doesn't require a license or the DMV, it's non regulated. But they have trucks coming in, they have tires, they put tires on. Um, or they're selling used tires, for example. So there's this weird gray area and it might not seem like a big deal, but if somebody opens up a tire shop and they say it's retail. And it could become a big deal to the other businesses there, so. Dialing in on some of these things will hopefully not put us in a position where we have to allow a use.
We've got to get them all the way around us, you know, so like what is the town fair kind of fit underneath?
So they do limited repair, so they will change oil, belt you, wipers and so that. Right, and they don't have any approvals or DMV, and they don't get a certificate of location. Retail.
Were you saying that modern tire doesn't get a DMV license?
Modern tire, do they do any oil or wiper? Then they would be a certificate of location, modern, so they would be automotive. But like Walling, Walmart, they usually have a tire shop, right? What's that retailer automotive?
I think they also do battery changes and things.
So then if there's some other stuff that they do. But there are a couple places. They just do, we sell used tires. Go and buy them off the insurance card.
Yeah, there's tires for less or something like that, but.
Yeah, yeah, so they, what, there's absolutely no oversight or requirement from the DMV. Because they're not, that's not part of an automotive repair. And so, you know, looking at that and thinking, we probably don't want a a used tire shop showing up in a in a retail plaza. You know, you want to kind of.
That'd be like Simon.
Well, this is, that's, that's, that's what happens. That's what staff like us sit around in the office and bang our heads against the wall because they don't have a definition. So we just wanted to make sure we're on the same page with that, how we want to treat these uses.
It's interesting because a lot of dry cleaning. Places don't really dry clean anymore. It's a drop off and pickup site.
Right. Yeah.
What are the auto, auto parts stores? They're retail.
Because I think other DMV, wiper blades and other things is falls within limits to repair.
Because I mean, I was kind of thinking, an easy way to do is just say. If you buy it and walk out through the door, it's retail. If it gets installed, it's automotive.
Yeah, I know when we did one in another town, it was an AutoZone, and they came in and their use application was for. A building that was partial retail, partial warehouse. So you have a small retail storefront and then a large warehouse area where they have parks and all these other. But from a parking perspective, if you look at the whole building and call it retail, they're going to get killed. So. It's a. It'll be good to have this town. And then like I said, Ruth, uh, wants to get into the uh, B three.
Anything else you want to put on the table since basically we're?
I don't have anything else.
Ruth, do you?
No, I'm good, thanks.
We have no executive session, so a motion to adjourn is.
Go ahead, Frank.
I make the motion be adjourned.
We need to do public participation. It should be soon. No, I think they're soon because I talked to um, Rand and.